We will now convene our study session for September the 10th. Again, I note that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review and discuss the items on the agenda for our September 14th council meeting. Council, are there, to begin with, are there any questions that, or any additional information you'd like to request on anything on that agenda?
Mayor, this is Mark.
Yes.
I just had an observation, 3C Gus's World Famous Fried Chicken. You know, I love chicken, but I tried to do a Google search and the closest Gus's World Famous Fried Chicken was in Santa Ana, California, so, or San Antonio. I just applaud them for coming to Mesa. Anybody else knows if there's another location of a restaurant, but that's a really neat thing for downtown Mesa.
It is. I see Councilmember Duff smiling. I'm sure she could. I read a great article on this in AZ Central about a week ago, and it's not an exaggeration to say they're world famous. This is a big deal. Councilmember Duff, I know you're excited as well. Anything you want to say about to welcome Gus's Fried Chicken to downtown Mesa?
Not anything in particular, but we all are excited and have been anticipating their opening for a while. Every time I walk by, I'm always peeking in and seeing their progress. I don't know exactly the opening date. I know it'll, I expect it to be sometime this fall. But welcome to Gus's World Famous Fried Chicken. We'll all be in line to taste the fried chicken.
Yeah. For sure.
We're excited.
Got a great neon sign up already, so yeah, we're looking forward to trying to see, seeing if it's overstated whether it's world famous or not, but I suspect it's pretty good.
And for the public's notice, Gus's World Famous Fried Chicken will be located next to Worth Takeaway, and we all know where that is, so look for it there in downtown Mesa.
Well, hopefully they're feeling the love already. You can tell we're excited.
Mayor?
Yes.
We do have a presentation for 6A, whenever you would like us to present that on Canyon Beach. Nana's here to just give council a highlight of this project has gotten a lot of publicity. We thought we'd have, give the opportunity to kind of share with council a little bit more about this project in detail. So whenever you're ready for that, we're ready to make that presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. So before we get there, I think we might have a few other questions. Councilmember Duff.
I just had a quick question on 4G. So does this contract include griff... Is that taking, do they take care of graffiti on walls, or is that just?
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, this is just for the walls we maintain. That is, this is not part of our graffiti abatement program.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, I have another observation.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
You know, on 4C, I'd like to thank our Salt River Indian Community for their generous donations for immunizations for our community. I think that's, our partnerships with them is, is great. And getting these immunizations out to our families and, and our neighborhoods. I just thank them for all their contributions that they do for our city. And as well as the 100 Club for the purchase of turnouts for firefighters, the extrication turnouts. They're very expensive and being a former firefighter, I appreciate their, all the help that helps our budgets in our respective departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Yeah, that's very, very timely, but this is the beginning of the flu season and the flu shot season, and so we really appreciate our, our, our neighbors at the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community for really paying for the free immunizations that our fire department's able to deliver in the community. That's much appreciated. Mr. Brady, item 5C, I note is disauthorizing you to spend some of our Federal Cares Act money for housing services programs. Seems like it might be a good time to get a little update on that, given that I know we've heard a lot about the moratorium on evictions expiring in October. I know the CDC recently came out with another recommendation to suspend evictions. Is this money rental assistance money that might be related to to that issue, or is it something else?
Mayor, Ruth is here to give you an update on that.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for asking about this funding. I have with me Mary Brandon this morning as well. So the Housing Services Department was notified that we were getting additional funding, so we were really, really excited to hear about this. And this is directly for our housing programs. And so we, of the $529,000, we went through, we figured out what we could spend it on and how best to utilize the funding. We were able to, our landlord outreach person, we're going to be able to have her salary come out of this funding. We're also going to dedicate 10% of this funding for additional landlord outreach. This is a really important component of our work because if we can get more, the more landlords we can get in the city, the better we can utilize our vouchers and help our residents that need them. We're also able to expend, quite a bit of it is going to go to technology. What we're doing is we're adding a kiosk in our lobby so that when the public does open, when we open to the public, they'll be able to do self-service. They'll be able to scan documents, update their files, do change order requests without even talking directly with one of our staff. We are also doing lots of other upgrades. We're now, we're updating all of our forms so that folks can just go right online and do fillable forms. We're working with Blue Ink on that. There's lots of other activity that we're doing, but that's, and then this money needs to be expended by June of next year.
And Mayor, so to your question though, your direct question about rental assistance eviction prevention, we will be making, coming back to the council with a significant amended program a week from today. And then, and then we'll be discussing additional dollars that are coming to Mesa. So we will be talking about doubling, nearly doubling the amount of resources we have committed today to, to those programs, and we'll be prepared to present, present that to you a week from this Thursday.
Okay, thank you. I knew there was breaking news on that and that there was additional funding on its way, so we'll look forward to that presentation next Monday to, to try to get, push that information out for people that, that I'm sure are anxious to hear it. Council, before we hear about the zoning case, any other questions related to Monday's agenda? Okay, seeing that, Mr. Brady, why don't we go ahead and hear about, about the zoning case?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. So the item number 6A is a rezoning case for, to basically create a commercial recreation activity at our location and also to allow a couple of industrial buildings at our location. As you can see from the PowerPoint, the property is located at the southeast corner of Power Road and Warner, as shown here on the map. The current zoning designation on the property is agriculture. So the request is to rezone it from AG to general commercial and also to light industrial. As you can see, there are three areas within the 59 acre parcel. Parcel A, which is being referred to as a development area A, that's 30 acres. So that area is being rezoned from agriculture to general commercial, and I'll go into details about this parcel or this area as I go through my presentation. And the request also includes a council use permit to allow outdoor seating areas because the property is located in the airfield overlay two. That's why they need a council use permit for the outdoor seating area. And they are also asking for final site plan review as well. So Area B and C, that is being rezoned from ag to light industrial. And although Area B, which will be more like, or is directly linked to the activities that are going to be conducted on Parcel A, because of that specific activity, they are required to rezone it to light industrial, and I'll go into details again. Parcel C or Area C, that is specifically being rezoned from agriculture to light industrial to allow industrial development on that southern portion. And that is 29, that's 20 acres. And just to specify also, on like Parcel A and B, those are site plan specific approval. Parcel C, however, is a conceptual plan. The reason why it's before you is because they're asking for few modifications to our development standards. The final site plan will be approved by Planning and Zoning Commission, and as I'm talking to you now, it's scheduled to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 23rd. So just to compare the areas, I know it gets a little bit confusing talking about area A, B, C. So on your right hand side, or at least on my right hand side, you see Area B and C. A, B and C. The rezoning on your left side, which shows to Cowes, Area A is the area that is being rezoned from agriculture to general commercial. And then Area B and C, that is being rezoned from agriculture to light industrial. So basically, there are going to be two zoning designations, as you can see on the, the other map. So again, as I said, the zoning designation is agriculture, as you can see, and you can see some of the surrounding zoning, it's within the vicinity of the site. The general plan character designation actually is, we have two character designation on it, and this was because we wanted to determine the uses as they come in. So one of the character designation is mixed-use activity, and the goal or the intent of this mixed-use activity character area is to encourage large-scale commercial development that draws from regional areas within the metro area. And then for the employment, that is the goal for the employment character designation is to also encourage or foster large commercial uses that are employment-related or directly brings employment to that location. And also organizing high-quality settings that encourages quality industrial development within that area. So Parcel A and B. Parcel A specifically, I think that's the one that is getting a lot of attention. What the applicant or the property owner is requesting is a kind of different uses. One of the critical use that is going to go at this location is a wave lagoon, which is approximately two acres in size. And this wave lagoon, my understanding is kind of a crazy setting waves for surfing, so people will be able to surf. In addition, the, there is going to be a hotel, as you can see here, that people can come and stay while they surf. And there's also going to be a gym. The use also includes a parking garage on the, as I'm showing here, I'm not sure if you can see my mouse. And there are offices, and then the path sides, as you can see on my, I'm looking at it on my left, which is the west side. Those are going to be for retail, commercial, restaurant kind of uses. So it's going to be more of a destination, so people can come, stay in the hotel, or you can come and surf, and then also just eat, you can spend your holiday there. On the southern portion, the industrial complex or flags that you see, that is going to be more for kart racing. They have this virtual experience where there are so many games that are virtual related. They also have a trampoline center that people can, if you don't want to surf, you can go to that game area or game room and have experience at activities there. So one of the critical components of this development is how does the whole development kind of unified or come together? So what they are proposing is carefully designed pedestrian connectivity. That link, as you can see, this has to be very much pedestrian friendly. You should be able to walk from one location to the other without any difficulty, so they have a well-designed pedestrian connectivity that connects the whole site together. So as part of the request, they also submitted kind of design guidelines to establish the design theme for the area and different building styles for retail, restaurant, office, hotel, and then the industrial part. The goal is to make sure that this is really a unified development and not just fragmented. And as part of that, they are also proposing type of building materials to really establish the quality within the development. And again, this are some of the pictures that shows you kind of the way the site is going to be developed, the building styles and various materials that are going to be used. And then they are creating overall, with the design themes and all the materials they are proposing are aiming, or their goal is to really create kind of a character for that area. So as you can see, this is an example of how the virtual reality center is going to be where you can go and play those games. There is going to be the hotel. You have the wave lagoon as well. And then the outdoor seating area or restaurants and all that. So as I said earlier on, as part of the request, they are asking for a council use permit to allow outdoor eat, outdoor seating areas because of its location in the overflight area two. And also, as part of our code requirements, it's a requirement for them to obtain a council use permit to allow large commercial development within the general commercial zoning designation. And then also a council use permit to allow the large-scale commercial recreation in the limited industrial zoning and the overflight area. So overall, the proposal meets general plan in turn for the character designation for the mixed-use activity, the employment character designation. And it's also compatible with all the uses that are being developed or planned to be developed in the immediate vicinity of the area. So with that, the applicant also conducted a citizen participation, which is a requirement of the process. And we did not receive any concern from any neighbor or any major concern from any neighbor to their request. The planning and zoning board considered this case on August 12 and recommended approval with a vote of 7 to 0. Staff also recommended approval. Both P and Z and staff are recommending approval with conditions of approval. So overall, our findings is, this meets the goal of the general plan. The Mesa Gateway Strategic Development Plan, this as I probably did not mention, but this is also located in the Mesa Gateway Strategic Plan, specifically in the inner loop study or the inner loop area, which the development is also consistent with that strategic plan. So with that, staff is recommending approval. And I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Nana. That's, this is an exciting, exciting proposal. It's fun to see the ocean making its way to Mesa, Arizona, again. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
I was just going to comment, Mayor, it's same thing. I mean, it's a Class A wave pool. You know, this is competition wave pools. My understanding too is that the citizens will use it, so you can do, you can rent, do rental space up to like 30 minutes of surf, surfing opportunities. Wish I was much younger and a little more flexible, because I think it'd be, learn how to surf without going into the ocean and fearing attacks from sharks. But I think this is a great project for, not only for our community, but for the region. And in, in of itself, the location of it being right off the 202 and Power Road makes it easy to get to by all of our neighboring cities and communities. So you, with the Galleria and the other things that are taking place on Ray Road to the south, this is just a phenomenal project and, and so we're pushing hard to, to make it work, and Nana and his, and his group, and Bill and his group are, are doing amazing work.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I've not heard any discouraging words about this. We can go paddle boarding on the Salt River in the morning and then surfing in the afternoon out at Gateway. That'll be fun. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. For Nana, remind me and refresh me on the council use permit. Are these permits grandfathered once they're issued, or are they revocable in case the project does not materialize? Why don't you answer that for me first?
Mayor, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Freeman, so the city council has the authority to revoke the council use permit that, but that has to go through another public hearing for the council to revoke the permit if that did not, if the use does not happen at the location.
Thank you. And also the noise mitigation, I know airport noise is extremely divisive sometimes, and just making sure, and I know you have, that it falls within the thresholds appropriately for the AOs. You said it's an AO2, is that correct?
That's what I advise, Mayor.
Okay, so again, there's no concerns with staff about, and Councilmember Thompson, you're, you're good with all that, correct?
Vice Mayor, I think the reason is there's not, there's not planned any residential here, so that's, that's why this fits well into that location.
Yeah, I just wanted to verbalize that to make sure that everybody understands that this is not a residential development and that there will be some noise mitig, you know, noise issues to some extent. So with that, no, I think this is a great project and I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
So, Nana, I'm asking you the question, when, once everything is approved, when do we anticipate completion, groundbreaking, and those kind of things? This is a wonderful project in District 6. Congratulations, Mr. Thompson. I look forward going over there. I'm like you, I'm not going to surf, but it's going to be cool to have, to have something like this in the city of Mesa, so I'm looking forward to that. So, and I know when you anticipate everything goes through, water approvals as well as approval of everything else that has to happen, when do we anticipate groundbreaking and those kind of things?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, I would defer that to the applicant, but I know they've started doing some testing on the site. And also they've submitted their final design review that is going to be going to the design review board, so that shows kind of their willingness to really move this project as quickly as possible. Or maybe Bill can answer the question also, the anticipated date. But I also want to add a comment to Vice Mayor, your question, the airport reviewed the project as well, and they did not express any concern with the development, so.
Okay, thank you, Council. Any other questions on this item? All right, thank you very much. Council, any other questions on anything on our agenda for the September 4th meeting? Mr. Brady, any other staff presentations or anything else you'd like to say about our Monday's agenda?
No, Mayor, not on, not on the 14th agenda, no.
Okay, thank you then. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item 2A, that's to hear a presentation and discuss an update on the 2021 Employee Benefits Program.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having us here. My name is Jan Ashley, and I'm the Employee Benefits Administrator for the city. Terry Overby is with me as our HR Director. And we're very pleased to present to you this morning the overview of our 2021 Employee Benefits Program for employees and retirees. All of our current vendors and administrators have been renewed or are continuing under the current contracts with no reduction in benefit levels and any rate changes kept as low as possible to support the ongoing programs. This includes our medical, prescription drug, dental vision, employee assistance, life, accidental death and dismemberment, and disability insurance programs, as well as our Health and Wellness Center and the Mesa 360 Wellness Program Initiative for our employees. The city and the employees value the top-ranked and professional services from the administrators and insurers like Cigna, CVS Caremark, Delta Dental of Arizona, VSP, Compsych, MetLife, Unum, and of course onsite care for our Health and Wellness Center services and administration. The Employee Benefit Trust Fund, under which these programs are all funded, has various funding sources including city contributions, employee and retiree contributions, state retirement system subsidies, and other third-party generated subsidies, rebates, and wellness credits. Our medical rate increases for 2021 will occur on the medical programs for our active employees. So we're recommending those programs have some rate increases next year. Premiums for retirees are planned to be maintained at current 2020 levels. The effect of these increases on active employees is approximately $4 to $24 a month increase, depending upon which plan the employer is enrolled in and the tier of coverage, whether it be single or family coverage that's involved. Some of the financial considerations that we took into account that contributed to these recommended approximately 4% rate increases include national and city medical cost trends, claims volatility during and post-pandemic period, and Employee Benefit Trust Fund balance projections going forward well into 2021. This next slide shows you a visual of the actual premiums that will be charged under the employee benefit program for full-time employees in the medical program. So you can see at a glance that the city will continue to contribute 100% of the premium cost of the basic medical plan. And that same dollar amount is contributed to each of the choice and the co-pay medical plans. Choice plan enrollment will see a $4 to $12 per month increase in employee rates. And the co-pay plan will see $8 to $24 a month increase in the rates. Again, depending upon which plan the employee is in and whether they have family or single coverage involved in that enrollment. Let's talk about some of the medical plan highlights that are going to occur in 2021. I'm very fortunate to be able to say that we'll be able to maintain the same benefit levels and plan options in 21 with a few adjustments to take care of compliance or standards of care requirements. The city's plan document has been amended to comply with national emergency pandemic response requirements. This includes COVID-19 testing diagnostic, diagnostic and future vaccine services being covered at 100% and some timeframe extensions for electing and paying for COBRA continuation services and filing claims and appeals under the plan. Additionally, the medical plan has improved coverage for virtual professional office visit services for medical and behavioral health providers providers at regular benefit levels. This is in response, of course, to new standards of care and increasing demand in the virtual environment. Plus, we have also consolidated with the help of Cigna, the contracted telehealth provider services will be with MD Live exclusively in 2021. They've been in existence in 2020 and sooner with another provider, but will be exclusively with MD Live in 2021 in order to expand those telehealth and other virtual care services available for employees. Our flexible spending account plans are IRS-driven in terms of the available and allowable plan design features, but there will be allowable increases in actual election amounts in 2021. So the maximum health FSA increase or election amount will increase to 2750, 2,750. That's a $50 increase over this year's allowance amount or. $2,750. That's a $50 increase over this year's allowance amount or election amount. The health FSA maximum rollover amount will also increase in 2021 to 550 for that amount to roll over potentially into 2022 should an employee otherwise qualify. IRS guidelines that were introduced in 2020 in response to pandemic considerations have a new provision that over-the-counter medicines and supplies can be reimbursed under the health FSA without a doctor's prescription or letter of medical necessity. So that's a valuable feature that is made for more usability within that plan this year and then ongoing. Our Vision Service Plan or Vision Care Insurance for Employees and Retirees was re-awarded to Vision Service Plan, VSP, after a procurement process that was earlier this year. The city and employees will enjoy premium decreases next year as well as increases in benefit levels with improvements in many allowances under these plan designs. For example, the out-of-network plan allowance is now $70. In-network frame allowance has improved to $170. It's $190 for featured frames and $95 for frames purchased at Costco, Sam's Club, and Walmart. The in-network contact lens allowance will also increase in 2021 to $220 a year. It presently is sitting at 200. The city's robust and ever-more-important Employee Assistance Program also had a procurement process earlier this year, and Comp Psych will continue as the vendor for these services in 2021 and beyond, under favorable terms and conditions for the city since that is 100% city-funded program that we provide for employees. Short-term disability is a voluntary insurance program. It is entering its third-year contract under the current contract with Unum. Premium rates for the heavily utilized seven-day program, seven-day waiting period program within this short-term disability insurance will increase fairly substantially in 2021. But this is following several years of no rate increases across two different insurance carriers for that particular plan design. The 29- and 44-day waiting period plans will continue to be available with no rate increases. All three plans will enjoy the same competitive high benefit levels. It allows a high level of protection for employees who have a disability and need partial income replacement after an applicable waiting period. Now we get to open enrollment, which is fast upon us. It's a little under four weeks away. It will be in in the period from October 7 through October 21, so a two-week period early and mid-October. The this open enrollment will be virtual, even more virtual than it has been in past years, with a newly designed and upgraded Eben Mesa online enrollment application and revised open enrollment communications in the city's benefits website. As in past years, the enrollment is designated passive, except for any changes employees and retirees want to make, and except for the city's FSA plans for which an active enrollment is required every year. Our annual Health and Wellness Benefits Fair at the Mesa Conventions Center has unfortunately been canceled for this year, primarily to avoid large indoor gatherings during these troubling and trying times going forward. However, various dates and times and locations have been identified and have already started for city management and wellness-supported events like additional COVID-19 testing opportunities, flu shot opportunities, and closer to the open enrollment period, appointments for mobile unit screenings for mammograms, bone density scans, and prostate screenings. So those were universally available programs and events that we would normally do at the benefits fair. So we've put them into other locations, dates, and times in order to see that they're they're going forward and are available for employees to use. So if there are any questions, I'd be very glad to answer them at this time.
Thank you. Council, any questions on this presentation? Okay. I'm seeing, and thank you, Terry and Jan. Good presentation. Good to see that you're taking good care of our very valuable employees.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
The next item on our agenda, Council, is item 2B, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on an update of the Mesa Cares Healthy Community Program.
Mayor, while we're waiting for Lindsay to come up, let me just remind the Council that we have free COVID testing and flu shots going on today for us till 10.
Yes, sir.
So after this meeting, you want to hustle over here to the rendezvous convention center? We'll ready to poke you in your arm and put a Q-tip up your nose. So we are, but we're getting a lot of good turnout and it's been a great program. So, all right, Lindsay and Forrest.
Way to sell that. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Lindsay Belinky from Community Services. I have my new trustee sidekick with me as well, Forrest, here with me to back me up. So we are here today to talk about Healthy Communities, which is a program aimed at running or offering community COVID testing and flu shots. So we are setting up events to offer testing and the flu shots in the ZIP codes that are testing higher for positive COVID tests right now. So that includes 85201, 85202, 3, 4, and 10. We are, we have partnered with the Fire Department on this effort. They are really doing all of the onsite event management. They're helping to do intake as folks arrive as well as assist with some of the testing needs, and then also, of course, to provide the flu shots. On our side of things, we're really putting together a lot of the event logistics in partnership with FIRE and also setting up a comprehensive marketing and outreach plan to ensure that the community in these ZIP codes are very aware of these events and feel comfortable coming to them. We do have Stewart Healthcare, which is also known as Mountain Vista Medical Center. They will be conducting the tests for us. And then we've also partnered with Mesa Public Schools. So Mesa Public Schools is very excited to have these events. We are hosting them at several schools throughout those ZIP codes I mentioned. And they're happy to be able to provide tests, really accessible tests at the schools to their families, to their teachers, as they talk about coming back to school. We will also invite neighborhood residents from around these areas. We are providing English and Spanish flyers and outreach materials to the community. We, of course, will be posting it on social media. We have access. Mesa Public Schools is helping to use their channels. They can do an automated call-out to their students, to the families, to let them know about this. They'll, of course, use the Peach Jar and their social media. We'll do some targeted next-door posts to make sure that we're really focusing on the areas around these schools. We are starting on September 19. So that is a week from this Saturday, and we'll be at Longfellow Elementary, which is near Reed Park. And then we follow up every additional Saturday for four weeks. So five events total. From Longfellow, we go to Lincoln and then Washington Elementary, Hughes Elementary, and Webster Elementary. All of these events are set to take place from 9 to 12, with the caveat that if we find that we have an overwhelming number of people and we need a longer event, we are open to changing that time if if the need arises. A few more details. So as I mentioned, everyone is welcome to attend. We will be really doing the targeted marketing and trying to make it feel like more of a neighborhood event where people can walk to the school and access testing, maybe in a different way than other sites allow. No appointments are needed. We will not be doing pre-registration, so people can just come to the event. Whole families can come and get tested, individual residents, whatever the case may be. We will provide an indoor social distance process, and this will be inside the school cafeterias. We are anticipating that you can get your COVID results within 48 hours of the tests. We're also providing Mesa Cares bags, which will include free masks for everyone participating, hand sanitizer, as well as several useful resources about our Mesa Cares programs and other city resources. And then Mesa Public Schools also has a partnership with Amazon, where they receive some free cleaning and sanitation supplies. So they'll be setting up at our events to be giving out those supplies to families that are showing up. And that's, those are the basic details. Are there any questions?
Mayor, just quickly, let me just jump in here. I just want to thank Andy Forless over at Mesa Public Schools. This program was really kind of initiated as she and I had a conversation about how could the city partner with the school district in helping them to prepare to bring children back into the classroom. And we talked about the concern we both had about specific ZIP codes in the city, which were relatively higher than other parts of the city, not necessarily significantly higher than maybe the rest of the state, but certainly a concern where they were consistently showing a higher level of positivity on COVID testing. And so we, to her credit, she embraced this very quickly and invited us to come and be, to come into the schools to make this happen. And she did that in a very quick manner, and I want to express her appreciation to her and to our staff. The Fire Department ran with this to get set up with the vendor to do the testing. We've got a commitment from Stewart Health, and I'll find out today whether they can hold it to this, that the COVID testing results come in 48 hours. So we're trying to do all we can in our efforts with our Mesa Cares dollars to provide some level of certainty, at least get, we understand this is only a one-time COVID test. If it works out well, we may consider coming back more often. But for now, we wanted just to see what kind of response we get from the community, the COVID testing, but the flu shots are very important. And then we also have the mask and sanitizers and those other resources that were going to be available to hand out. So we're looking forward to this and look forward to reporting to Council about the response we get from the community as we set up these events. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay and Mr. Brady. Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mr. Brady and Lindsay, for the wonderful presentation. As you can imagine, there's a lot of anxieties in the schools related to kids coming back, as well as our teaching staff working with our students. This was, this is a step to somehow mitigate some of those concerns. I think this is a great program. Thank you to work, working in concert with Mesa Public Schools to get this activity going. It's essential for our community to feel safe. They need to feel safe if they can, you know, in terms of them coming back to the schools, providing this mechanism, these opportunities, giving them the shot, the flu shot, as well as the COVID testing is wonderful for our community, but it also eases the anxiety of many of our teaching staff that work. So, so thank you so much, City Mesa, you, Chris, as well as our Fire Department, and Lindsay, and anyone else that is going through this, has put this program together. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Mr. Heredia, and then Ms. Duff.
And just a question on, I think, Chris, you mentioned as far as the follow-up, you know, important aspect of testing is getting tested first, but even more important, the follow-up, and do we have information on, is it Stewart Healthcare doing the follow-up as far as connecting with the families of, you know, even negative, positive tests, and then any other work that they're doing after that?
Okay, thank you. Forrest, you want to take that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Heredia, Mayor, Council. To answer your question, working with Stewart has been a really good benefit for us because what they're going to do is in working with the county, they will be doing the notifications. Now, if we have a person who has tested positive, they will be notified 24 hours after the test results come back. So which gives us that 48-hour window or so. That's what that means. They also will have a portal set up, and what we're finding with the employee base program is that the members of the public will have access to a portal to be able to find their negative tests. So really, the portal set up for them to have that documentation that it shows that they had tested negative. And that ways, and as as set up by Mr. Brady and by the group here, this gives individuals the opportunity to set up a baseline for themselves, and then they could pursue continuing tests either through us in the future, if that's provided, or through other organizations.
Thank you, Francisco. Councilmember Duff.
Yes, thank you very much. And Councilmember Luna, I do appreciate your comments on the schools and how important it is. I've noted that the ZIP codes that were noted were all the ZIP codes in District 4, and I know it affects surrounding areas, surrounding districts as well. So thank you, especially for me, knowing this greatly affects the community in which I represent. It also helps us combat the disparity that we've experienced during the pandemic of our low income and people of color and those who already have so many challenges on their plate. And this is a way to be able to be proactive in creating a well, healthy community and quality of life. I want to express my advocacy for everyone to get tested, whether you feel well or not, and to get a flu shot. This is part of what we can all do in order to create a healthy community to recover from this pandemic. This winter will be critical in that part of what we can do together in order to come out of the pandemic instead of continually being set back. We're making headway, and this is a way to make sure that we make it to through the winter and for a healthy spring. So I advocate for everybody to take this upon themselves as a citizen, to do this for your family and for others. I'd also like to ask if there's any kind of ID or any other requirements that are needed when you check in and go to the schools for testing and shots?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Councilmember Duff, Mayor. There will not be identification required. So there's some basic information they need to provide just in order for us to do follow-up if with test results.
Just enough to be able to follow up with the test results, but nothing else.
Name, address, and contact information.
Great. And so no appointment is necessary. So you can gather up with your family or friends and go together and get the testing and the flu shot. I know as a city employee, I did my testing and flu shots on Tuesday, and it was very quick, very, I was in and out in minutes. And I trust that these events will be orchestrated as well. So it'll take very little time to get in and out and just make it part of your Saturday morning. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Duff. Council, other questions or comments on this? I'll share that Forrest took good care of me this morning prior to our council meeting. I stopped off at the at the conference center and got a flu shot, got a COVID test. And Forrest and others, I mean, they're passing out a lot of masks. If you need masks, as Mr. Brady has indicated to us earlier, you know, that the city purchased in bulk, you know, got a great deal on masks. So if the community needs masks or hand sanitizer, this, these events are great places to get store up on those supplies as well. I'm proud of the, this is another example of why I'm proud of the way the city of Mesa is utilizing our CARES Act funding. I think this is exactly, you know, no better way for us to spend those funds than than out in the community, particularly in the ZIP codes that are testing higher than others, doing COVID testing and and free flu shots. So I thank you to, the friend this morning was extremely professional, extremely quick, as as Councilmember Duff indicated in the way that they administered this program. I'm excited that we're partnering with with the schools on this. Hopefully, this will help alleviate some of the anxiety and stress that we're seeing in our community regarding returning to on-campus learning. My only fear in all of this is that this program's not going to be as utilized as it could. I regret driving around town and seeing, you know, free COVID testing sites that are not being utilized. A couple of weeks ago, took advantage of the I, a couple of weeks ago, took advantage of the 24/7 site out at Mesa Community College in the parking lot there, and again, drove in and out in less than five minutes, got my test results in about 48 hours. You know, the systems are there, and they're up and running, and they're effective, they're easy to use. I think it's incumbent on those, the council and others, to use our... The resources we have to push this out and to just really encourage the community to take advantage of these opportunities. That's how we're going to get in front of COVID in our community. So I'm very excited about this, very appreciative of the staff for standing this program up, and I'm looking forward to later today, you know, starting to shout this from the rooftops on social media and other places to encourage our community to take advantage of this. Anything else, counsel, we'd like to say on this topic? If not, thanks again to Forrest and Lindsay and Mr. Brady for this great information. Hopefully, you know, we'll have people standing in line to get these tests very, very soon. Next item, counsel, on our agenda is item 3. That's to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Luna. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Duff.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you, and I vote aye as well. That passes unanimously. Item 4 on our agenda is current event summary on reports and conferences attended. Counsel, I know you've been busy. What would you like to share with us? Start with Mr. Luna.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've had a busy two weeks. Let's see, last week I had several colleagues, as well as my staff, attend the Arizona League Conference. We had a number of virtual sessions. We had legislative update, as well as future and current issues related to COVID and what the new normal is going to look like as we move forward. Also attended the National League of Cities, National Forum, as in public safety, met... Also met with some of the members of our civilian member of our Mesa PD Critical Incident Review Board, had conversations with them. It was very worthwhile, and certainly appreciate their input, as well as their assistance as we move forward with that. Let's see. Also met with an individual about smart infrastructure, looking to do some projects here in the City of Mesa, for those two, Ian, who will be looking with this organization to see if this is something we're going to do relative to a smart city initiative. Recorded a few public service announcements in Spanish for Mesa Public Schools to get teachers and students, as well as staff, ready for students going into the school district. Let's see, and I met with governing board member Marcie Hutchinsons, related to looking at providing some opportunities for some of our Spanish-speaking students, related to providing educational opportunities using digital platforms, and then looking at ways for mitigating the digital divide. So busy two weeks and look forward for some additional activities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. You've been busy. Counsel, who else would like to share with us? Councilmember Duff.
Yes, I'm also attended many of the National League of Cities, or Arizona League of Cities, and National League of Cities conferences, and there are a wealth of information and connection in order for us to continue our work in the city. I'd like to also mention that I ran the United Way Home Run 5K, and I have my medal. This will be the only medal I'll ever receive for running, I guarantee you. I'm not much of a runner, but for a good cause, I'm certainly glad to do it. It was fun. Yvonne and I got out early one morning and did our 5K. So good luck to Mesa United Way and their nonprofits, and thank you for putting on a fun event, and look forward to doing another one. It was a virtual event that we did on our own time and just recorded our tracking, and there's posts on Facebook about that, but thank you very much. Also, yesterday, the mayor and Vice Mayor Freeman and I toured the Groves on Main Street, which is the new development near the temple on the southeast corner of Mesa Drive and Main. And if you've driven by that area, you've seen plenty of construction and plenty of building is going up very quickly, and we were able to tour some of the residences, and they're very well done, thoughtful views and amenities, and it's something that I'm really looking forward to bookending our downtown as we redevelop and reemerge from the COVID. And they are leasing starting this fall, and there'll be the temple opening, I believe, next year, and some other things to come. So this is a significant change for that area and for our downtown, and so I just wanted to share my excitement. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Francisco.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to give a shout-out to... I partnered with Mesa Public Schools Foundation in hosting a back-to-school fundraiser for West Valley, West Mesa Schools, and we were able to donate several thousands of dollars that went towards schools in West Mesa, thanks to the Dobson Ranch Golf Course vendor there, who generously gave a donation there, East Valley Firefighters Charities, AT&amp;T, and others, that were able to provide some donations to get our students back with the supplies they need for around technology and, you know, backpacks and school supplies. So want to give a shout-out to those who donated and made it as possible, so thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments? Mr. Thompson.
I'd like to talk a little... Some developers that we met with last week, Bill Jigeniac and I met with several folks to talk about moving their businesses to District 6, you know, or from out of state to District 6. RJ and I, RJ is our transportation director, he and I also met with a couple of folks last week. One was our southeast business group to talk about some of the flooding that's taking place on Pecos Road and Meridian, and some of the issues around that, and as well as the proposed construction of Meridian Road by the town of Queen Creek in Fennell County, and how to mitigate some of the flooding in that area with part of the construction. So I think until the overall design of the flood basins and so forth are done, that's going to continue to be on the radar for the businesses out there. RJ and I also met with a company that is doing, providing the white-pigmented slurry seal, I guess, that Phoenix is testing out right now. We talked to them a little bit about maybe doing a pilot or something in Mesa to see how it holds up. We still want to look at some of the data and so forth that they're doing in Phoenix while they're testing that, and see how it holds up to traffic and so forth, and what happens with the temperatures, the ground temperatures in the area. So that'll be really interesting to see. And then we invited Mr. Mesquite to Mesa this past Saturday, and really, really good at Mr. Mesquite Taqueria, really, really good steak tacos. So if you're out in the Crisman and Southern area, I'd encourage you to stop by and grab some lunch or grab dinner. They have awesome tacos, really good carne asada burritos, too.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else? I would just join with Councilmember Duff in saying that congratulations, United Way, for the great Home Run 5K. I participated virtually as... Well, I guess I participated in it physically, but remotely as well. That was a... I know they did very well, and congratulations to them on that good fundraiser. And just amen to Councilmember Duff's report on the Groves on Main and Mesa Drive. The quality of that project really exceeded my expectations, and it was fun to see, you know, such a transformative thing happening in our downtown. Looking forward to all that's going to happen there. Had the... Was honored to be part of the Greater Phoenix Urban League Conference this week and speak on housing, and talk about affordable housing and other things that we're doing in Mesa, as well as appreciated an invitation to speak to the leadership group of students at Benedictine University and welcome them back to campus and let them know how important venue is to the City of Mesa. So I know we've all been busy and appreciate, Counsel, all that you're doing to remotely and responsibly continue the work of our city during the pandemic. Mr. Brady, the next item on our agenda is schedule of future meetings. What are we looking at?
Thank you, Mayor. Right now, we look forward to seeing you here on Monday, September 14th. I think we'll be starting at 5:15. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item, counsel, on our agenda is convene an executive session regarding the Pecutus lawsuit. Is there a motion to convene the executive session? Thank you, Mr.
John, this is Jeremy. I got... Before we vote on this, I have a friend that's working on this case, so to... Of conflicts, I'm going to conflict off anything to do with this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. So it's understood, Mr. Whitaker has declared a conflict on this agenda item. I'm sorry, can... Who would like to make the motion for the executive session? Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. We'll do a roll call vote. Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Heredia.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
And again, I'll note that Mr. Whitaker has declared a conflict, so I will vote aye as well. The motion passes. We will now close out of our Zoom meeting and go into a Zoom executive session. Counsel, I think you all have the next link to get into this meeting. So we'll shut it out. Thank you very much.